Five o'clock on October eighth, the select board meeting. Call the meeting to order. Agenda tonight is really short, but some interesting stuff on here. We do have the public comment. We have the state election warrant. The conservation restriction for parcel fourteen forty zero, sweet property on Pleasant Street. And forty one Lowell Street, the land development agreement. The ARPA relocation, the funds for the town hall boiler and other repairs. And then we have the TA report, and that's it. That's great. Public forum, if anybody out there would like to speak of something not on the agenda. All right, you will expect to hear nothing else from me tonight, Jon, so we'll get.
We love that.
Okay, next thing is the state election warrant. The four questions, I'm sure everyone is right, that's it, just the four questions that's on there. That's the answers.
Yeah. But with the president, vice president, first, the entire election?
Right, the election and the four questions.
Right. The warrant in total, the election warrant in total.
Look, we can read through it if you like, or?
No, yeah, no issues.
Not particularly.
Word for word, every piece, every question?
It's for the electors of the president, vice president, senators, representatives in Congress, councilors, senator in general court, representative general court for the courts, registered deeds, school committee. That's for the great Lowell, for four years of Drake, it four years for Lowell. And then the four questions that the state sends out, I don't know if it's ever household.
It's five.
And we just need to approve this.
Move to post the warrant for the 2024 state election at the post office, town hall, police station, and library.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? None, all in favor?
I see an audience member with a hand up.
Four questions, are these different questions than the ones we got from the ladies?
No, it is the question one law proposed by initiative petition.
Each question are the ballot questions.
Right.
As the ballot has been proposed, is being presented. There's not a different set of questions here and some other one out there. This is, this is, this is for the secretary of state.
The one for the, referring to the state auditor, the second one regarding the MCAS, the third relating to transportation network drivers' right to form unions. And then fourth, I believe that has to do with the tipping.
Yeah, the minimum wage.
For the minimum wage for tipped employees.
Is that the one that the, that the votes?
Oh, no, sorry, I'm, I'm wrong.
Yes, the tipping one.
That's number five.
Oh, okay, so there are five.
There are five questions, yeah, I was wrong, sorry about that. Strike that, three and four.
Strike that. I guess in one.
Strike it from the right.
Right, okay. So you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
That's why I seconded that, I think.
Yep, and we voted to approve?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the next thing is the conservation restriction for parcel fourteen forty zero off of Pleasant Street. It's a conservation restriction that being taken on by the land trust. And we just have to sign this, because that's what we have to do. And um, did you?
This is sweet.
Yeah, please, Ernest G. Sweet parcel off of Pleasant Street. We've been working with the Dunstville Rural Land Trust, the trust to have a conservation restriction on that property.
Yeah, there's a pond or something behind it.
It's, yeah, it was in that by Ernest G. Sweet, it was in behind, up the right behind there, down to the Salmon Brook. And followed Salmon Brook over into the hit for the pot work. He's in behind the main sheet or suite, there's fourteen or seventeen eighty, the local doing goodbye preparation, restriction on that. We started in the two thousand eighteen, and we pulled it out when we told them that money was tight, and we were tied up in the clothes, and we were back in there to tell them only one year, but in four years, we put the state on that.
Yeah, they've had a little bit of a backlog, including conservation restrictions there. Run it this a few times here, so unfortunately.
We're just, we don't know about anything, but it's by any description.
It's a good deal for the land, and it's a part of the, sort of that waterway that we sort of have our eye on to keep protecting.
Yep. The greenway along Salmon Brook, which is our main source of our wells and aquifers for our water system, so we have a reason to protect this piece of property.
I think it's important for those at home to know that it's not for, it's not public access, but it's not our funds, it's not taxpayer funds, the land trust.
Correct.
Acquisition, so we're just, we're just assigning, signing off, you know, CR authority.
And I also want to be careful to those who are watching, this is not a sweet pond.
Right.
That is correct, that's right.
Because I heard that, like, sweet pond.
Yes, yes, very good.
You know that?
Yeah.
Near sweet pond.
Yeah.
So that's not. So I move to approve the conservation restriction from Ernest G. Sweet, excuse me, from Ernest G. Sweet, in Ernest G. Sweet to the Dunstville Rural Land Trust for property located on Pleasant Street, recorded in, excuse me, at the Middle Section North District Registered Deeds in Book twenty four eighty, page five twenty one, in the public interest pursuant to section thirty two of chapter one eighty four of the Commonwealth, excuse me, of Massachusetts General Laws.
All right, well, second that.
Any further discussion? None, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, that was easy.
I'll call you tomorrow.
All right, I assume you have a copy that?
Yes, yeah, I've got a bunch of stuff for you this, yeah.
Okay, next up, item number five is forty one Lowell Street Land Development Agreement. This is the forty B fifty five plus project for Brattle on the Dumont property. Just working out the details for development agreement. We have the latest from the junior divorce.
And really, the focus here is just the pasture land, right? That's sort of what we're visiting mostly?
Well, I think, well, I mean, there's several changes to this, not anything of true or large substance, but there is more, more guidelines and structure to the overall document. It does speak to that, that pasture land as well. There was, in addition to that, that was made to allow up to three percent of it to support a structure that would be related specifically to livestock, maybe.
Okay.
So that's a four acre parcel, three percent of that is about, just about five thousand square feet. I'm assuming that would be in total and not per structure. So it could be a cumulative bunch of small ones, but the limit is five.
Not only.
Yeah, the total area, yeah. So like, you would have like a, I know like in some towns, you'd do like a hoop house, right? So if you had the cows, they needed a place to hang out for inclement weather. If we had a, if we had a Milton come our way, they'd go in there.
Even the way there was nothing there, so.
You could have a barn, people just walk in.
You know, you'd have more of a variety than you got now.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know cows, so I couldn't really tell you. Or if they were goats or whatever, that.
They're using plastic cans.
That's perfect.
They got it from the hilltop, and so I saw him in the back of his truck.
But overall, it's still basically the same, one hundred and fifty six unit, fifty five plus. Twenty five percent of the units being affordable, and an eighty percent typical area medium income. Twenty five percent are eligible for the inclusion of the state subsidized housing in Utoni. It'd be broken down into three of the large buildings, and then the remaining as standalone units of, what are they, basically two and three bedrooms?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if it's really going to change of note is the pasture land, then that makes sense to me, and I, I like the idea of there being some livestock, whatever, if the flamingos blowing up here for Milton, or cows, or goats, or sheep, whatever.
The property in the back, south of the power lines, is intended to be conveyed to the land trust as open space. No work within the sixty foot buffer zone, according to the request of the Conservation Commission. The garage will be renovated and gifted to the town as a potential heir to the garage.
To be determined.
To be determined.
TV gift. Yeah, not a lot of questions to me there, we beat this one up pretty good, so.
Yeah, I'm, I read through this couple of times early on. I don't get to tell them, I don't get to discuss it all. Do you, that we need to edit this, we all have an agreement, that we're all happy with what we got here. It's time to join into contact living?
This has been reviewed more times than any other documented document, so, you know, this has been reviewed many, many times, come back and forth, I think, it's very.
I think so, too. I move to approve the land development agreement between the town of Dunstville and Brattle Development LLC for the development of one hundred and fifty six housing units on property located at forty one Lowell Street, as presented. It authorized the town administration to sign the land development agreement on behalf of the board.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? None? In favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jon.
So next step on this, once this is signed, gets submitted to the state?
For the lift application.
The lift application.
Now, which they've prepared, and essentially is ready to go.
Were you able to draft the recent number?
I've reviewed it, it looked, it looked consistent with what we talked about all along, so. And I've shared it with the board as well, so, so, yeah, I think, and at the prior meeting, the board approved filing the lift application and submitting the letter of support. So those two things are in place now, the BFLD in place, LDA in place, it's, it's, the next step is filing the reapplication.
You know, the other two documents that are outstanding, like the letter, support letter from the town, which we provided the draft of, and the letter of support from the local partnership, and one of the providing. So that's, that's for you to forward some methods, if you see that.
Great.
Just one thing, just to scrub all the documents, because we've had a name change from Board of Select Men to Select Board, and I saw it in a few places it had been changed, there was one or two spots, just so we have that.
In the M R U, it was still?
What did I click and?
I think it was in the left.
It was in the left, not in the right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Get it right. Well, see you later.
It was probably correct when you drafted it, it just happened, it just happened.
Yeah. All right.
Cool. Yeah, everybody? Yeah.
Anything else?
Thanks, guys.
I, I do.
Do you want to sign?
I can sign it, I think.
I can, we can, we're, if you want, I have two copies.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
I think it's just you, Jason, right?
Yeah, you'd be authorized signatory if you were. Day's over.
Actually, one on oil and tanning.
Yes, but I was just gonna say, we need to have another meeting so they can.
Drop a bucket off.
They had something downstairs last year, and they had a bunch, and it was like, these are nice. Saving the town. Although we're paying for these pens anyway.
Yeah, they're getting their.
Yeah.
They're into flusher, counterflusher, what's it, counterflusher? I don't know.
You just said it in the name.
I think it made me feel bad, I don't need that, I like it. I switched my hotel.
Oh, yes.
The bank crack, and there's still a restaurant.
Jason's got one, I don't know, one of mine.
Hot potato?
Yeah.
Pretty cool. Actually, I fell out in Boston or something, for pause, maybe you guys in the role, maybe a lot of it. They've been, interestingly, they're doing the whole area like this, after I'm into the smaller, fewer buildings in Boston.
Oh, wow.
That was really cool. Yeah. Yeah. There was open bar, and they raised this. It's a down bar. What do you, what do you need?
Whatever you have.
All right, let's call the meeting, that's all. All right. One more thing on our agenda, and that is for the ARPA reallocation for a town hall boiler. This poor boiler, it's just gonna be like the final thing to fix this.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, let me, disaster going on up there.
Death is God.
Oh, my God. God help.
So let's, let's have a little bit of a discussion about this location. I know it's on TV, and there's not a lot of people here tonight. I want to be really careful to understand that, that the boilers were put in, they were placed about ten years ago, okay? And they had deferred maintenance for the last nine.
Was this the town of Dunstville?
And now there's an accumulation of problems, which is typically how deferred maintenance goes, that starts off with this and becomes that, right? The, this heater that we see here today, I want to be careful that we understand, we all understand this, that this heater was put in along with the other one to heat this room. At that certain time, the HVAC system for this room, the H, so the heating and air conditioning system for this room was non-functional. Those heaters kept us warm. This is a different place that we're in right now. The primary heating system is failed, this building has no heat, not, not in this room, not downstairs, no place. It's got zero heat and zero hot water to wash your hands. Right, just, we're not, it's cold water.
Yeah.
So Jason and I worked on this last week, right, on the way, and, you know, he's got pricing in here that is competent, comprehensive, local guys, this is not a good situation for us to be in, it's not.
It's getting cold.
It is, it is, it is, and so there are four items on the hit list. One of them, I'm a little fuzzy about, and that one is sealing the drain pan for twenty four hundred dollars. The four Ron with sign marks upon to that, I don't, I don't see a labor material break down because that was a couple of tubes of cotton, and I don't know how they're even gonna seal that pan the first place. It's, it's, it was a poor decision to put a pan like that in, in a corrosive environment. If that contractor did that, then that's how you got it. But nonetheless, there's the boiler repairs, which is a pump, boiler maintenance, which is igniters and some sensors in there that allow the gas to be burned correctly, a relief valve, which is currently leaking on a pan that can't hold water, and all that stuff ran into the ceiling last week or the week before, right? So the plan is to pipe the valve, the relief valves, into a drain, so we never have to go through that again. And then there's this twenty four hundred dollars, which is gonna seal that pan and try to give it some integrity, I just don't know.
But this, if this, just actually.
Yeah, and it's not a, it says that they can't guarantee it won't, because they gotta pop the boiler out.
I'm not a fan, right, and if you take, if you take the boiler out, what should have been put under it is a, is a poly, polyethylene pan.
Yeah.
We can't do that right now, because the polyethylene pan is about three quarters of an inch thick, and the one that's up there now is probably about sixteen, so the piping is off the line. You can't take the boilers out.
Can't hit reset, yeah.
It ain't gonna work that way. So the best hope is that we take any of the overflow devices that drain into the pan, drain them directly to a sanitary waste, or an indirect waste, and just eliminate that problem, and, you know, I'm just, twenty four hundred dollars to seal that pan, just looks.
So you're saying if we do the, the piping, we don't need this?
We won't, yeah, I'm not a big fan of spending that money, I cannot, and I don't understand that it's, it's a couple of tubes of silicone, a brush, and an hour's work, twenty four hundred dollars is a lot on me for that. I just, it just, it just doesn't seem right. The rest of the work, the boiler repairs, maintenance, and new piping, I think that we decide that Denomi from Kingsborough?
That's what this calls us, but.
Based on.
These numbers are based on.
Yeah, and you know what, they're gonna get, I'm gonna tell you that I've worked with Denomi in trade a few years, Denomi's a quality organization.
Yeah.
And I would support, and what I would do is let's get all of this done, because we do not, we need, we need reliability in that heating system plant, and just to let this go is just, I mean, it's a ten horsepower, seven and a half, ten horsepower pump that's up there, we smoked it, because no one was up there putting oil in it. It needed oil, I mean, no one did it.
Can we set aside this twenty four hundred then to put into a maintenance program? To cover ongoing maintenance servicing, so that we don't? Are we allowed to do that?
We have to commit the ARPA budget in the calendar year, and we have to spend it two to one, two years after. So as long as we, we could enter into a.
Service agreement.
Yes, we could with that.
Ask, ask, have, you know, have Denomi send you over a service agreement. I'm, I'm gonna tell you that in my world, service agreements for one year are not a good value, they need to at least be three. It just doesn't, it's, it's, it's a nutty number.
It's one year.
Yeah, it's one year.
Yeah, Band-Aid till next November, see you later.
If you could, Jason, look, give us a call for a three year service agreement. So here, they're gonna commit in August, September, and, and change the pilots on that thing, right? And you're done, but if you get it for one year, no, those numbers, they don't come up the right way, and I've been doing this a really long time, and they don't. And so I'd ask them for a three year package. And, yeah, I do, I do, he, Denomi, is one of the owners of the company, and he and Ron work in trade together, and we work with people.
Ron, you mean, they're short.
And so I, I support them, I think they're a good organization, not to say that Wilson's not, I mean, Denomi is a little better, I would like to see us move with that allocation of that ARPA, and get these, get this repair work done now. To that point, Jason, I think this is an emergency repair, this goes the way it is. I would sit down and talk about it.
Would you?
Yes. Call my wife. Joni?
You know, I can't remember a time when we haven't had problems with the previous town hall work.
You're right.
I'm sure not.
Well, I don't know that's.
What's the problem?
I don't know that that's completely accurate, and here's why I say that, all right? I have pictures of the boilers that we took out and put these in. These got put in about ten years ago because of the condition that, we had a closed town hall, if you remember that, we closed it for several days, I think we did it over Thanksgiving weekend, we closed Tuesday and Wednesday, whatever it was, at least, and that was to replace the boilers. Some of these other problems that we have have been specific to other components of the system outside of the boiler. Like this room lost its heat, it lost its heat because the air handling system circulates the air and failed, nothing to do with the heat. And so we had a guy, Norman Lefin Fox, who did it, and, and so, you know, and then downstairs, you know, where Carol Rock sits, there were issues with that thing, it had, but that was an electrical problem that was up in the air.
Yeah, it was an electrical problem.
I think John Bagby's house fixed it, or Interlock and Electric, or whatever it was, Multi-Box, that was an electrical problem.
There's been a bunch of different.
Yeah, they're all just issues, they're not, and they, but they, to, to your, to your point, you see it as a lot of people do, what's going on to heating that machine? It never works. It looks that way, it does, but when you peel back beyond, you take a deeper dive into it, we get all these little components.
Now, the new system that go, go up there, it is not gonna require somebody to walk there, and, and with a can of two and one oil, and lubricated and relieved, it's, you know, eliminating that problem that caused the.
We're gonna have to change the handles that are running the new stuff.
Yeah, give me a sec.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't need to be lubricated that frequently, but typically, a once a season go-through is what should be happening, and it has not been happening, it hasn't happened.
So we should be in good shape. Most of the components seem to have been addressed and replaced or fixed within the past two years now, so knock wood. With maintenance, with regular maintenance, every year.
Air information is briefed, and then those guys will come out and they'll do that for.
They'll be tied to it, yeah, that's right, that's right. And that, you know, but I want to be careful to understand that that service contract that we're speaking about here is specifically for the heating system. Pump circulators, and there's some other components too as well. That doesn't mean that the air conditioning system is included in that, because it's not.
But that's, also should be maintained under that.
You know what, there's a lot to be said for that, but your risk with HVAC is on the heating side and not on the air conditioning side. What's, what I mean by a risk, if it's cold in the building, people aren't gonna come to work, pipes are gonna freeze, you're gonna have freeze damage, that's all, it's that heated, the air conditioning system, if it goes bad, you know what, it might be hot for a couple of days, and you get it fixed, and that's the end of it. But the liability in the heating system is fine, most significant, sprinkler system freezes, but you can get it to a rescue. And so we spent a ton of money, some of it was our money, and some of it was money that paid to the town from the insurance company. You know, the ceiling was replaced, we replaced that ceiling three times since Jason's been here. Since Jason's been here. And the insurance companies picked up the tab, they also replaced the units for this, this, this green hall has got a brand new heating and air conditioning system in there. And, and now we've just finished the clerk's office, well, it's called the clerk's office, it's the front half of the building, just replacing a component up in the attic, right? How long goes town hall renovation over twenty years, right? The air conditioning systems that are in here, I'm telling you, for everybody to use, residential air conditioning systems, they are not commercial, they belong in a home, okay? And that's what we got. And, you know, hopefully, this is the end of that, right? This has been a tough time, so.
We don't have ARPA so much.
Stormwater.
Unless we have another pandemic.
What's the total lot price tag for this?
But we're looking to take it out of ARPA money, so it's not money that's coming from the tax base or from our budget.
How much will that leave us, how much ARPA will that already have left at the end?
We have, well, we still have, we'll still have approximately $40,000 for MS4. This is a plus, like, $40,000 in MS4.
Yeah.
Stormwater. And I think, quite frankly, we're not gonna be able to commit that all to MS4 by. So we'll probably have some additional funds, we'll be looking to use in other ways as time, as time gets closer to being our calendar year.
So one thing I think about with like thermostats and such is, I know that thermostat does this room, but also does the office spaces? Is that correct, or is it two zones?
No. That thermostat does this room, there's a thermostat in his office that does the back half, and there's another one behind where Sue sits, that does the front half and the old selectmen's office.
Okay.
Okay? And then the downstairs is on its own thermostat. And then there are, and then, and the grand hall downstairs, now. There's the thermostat there.
Grand hall.
Yeah.
That just controls the heat.
Should these be smart thermostats?
So we had smart thermostats in there. We did, okay, we did. And there were so many service calls.
Not the smartest, but there's.
We had service calls up.
Yep.
The wazoo, because no one knew how to make thermostats work. And so, no, we went through, the building was Christmas morning, the building was 20 degrees, because one of the thermostats put the heat in the off position. We, so we opted to not put those in, and those are traditional standard, non-programmed thermostats. Up, down, heat pool off. It's dumbed down specifically because we went through that. And I, I do realize that was a long time ago, and people are more confident, but we, we had that. The downstairs unit had two or three service calls on it, because they changed the settings, and we weren't in the right zone, and we got rid of all those things that brought that reason.
I just asked, because I know, yeah, simplicity is really important, but we also have groups using this building after our town administrative office folks have headed home. And sometimes, if it's really hot in here, and you're, you know, here doing bone builders, or you're doing theater performance, and you turn it off, that could be a Friday night, and it might be a long weekend, and no one's back there until Tuesday, and if the heat's off, and it's December. So I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to add more money to the, you know, costs here, but you're, you're right about being a little fearful of what could happen. If those sprinkler heads freeze, you ruin this whole room.
We did. After, because we had a freeze upstairs last week, right? It was a pipe leak, and the lady got upset.
Yeah.
And the one who found it was Joe Dean. And the water was spraying all over the floor, and then the, the neck group was coming in to fix muscles or something. And there was water like all over the place. So we fixed that. My, my, my point with this is that there was a point in time that although we're still doing it for the last, but during the cold weather, the police were supposed to come and check the building. Lots of shit. Now, I don't know if that is happening, or we visited that with Eric, but the deal was, they were supposed to stop in and just make sure the town hall was, okay?
It's dry.
It's, no one's ever gonna know, you're right, that's just it. Until Joe Dean comes in on Sunday morning and the basement's flooded, that's how we found that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and it's just something to keep thinking about, like.
We don't, we don't have a, we have no, we don't have a security system. The security system that's here is like a barking dog.
Yeah.
It doesn't do anything.
So you can put like sensors on, like watering units and things like that.
And you could put temperature sensors on, like, when I, when we, we go away in the winter, A B T called, our boiler was off, right? But we called Warden, and they came and they got the boiler running. We don't have any, we don't have any of that, like, because the alarm system is so rudimentary.
Yeah.
It just will keep having a buzz on, it doesn't do anything.
Yeah.
And so we could put water detection sensors in, right? Picks up a leak. We could put some temperature sensors in that report back to the alarm system, which are comms.
Well, let's see what we have left over.
If the building's cold, we could. There's no intelligence of the building at all.
Yeah. Just, I mean, right, if, if we came in here January, it was our first season of the year, the place was full of brown water from the sprinklers. We don't look great. And we don't have a working environment for our employees and staff.
Oh, come down to money, people.
Yeah. No, I mean, I know we have a motion in front of us, so we won't delay this anymore, so.
So I move to approve the re-allocation of ARPA funds from the MS4 stormwater permit, um, ARPA allocation in the amounts, in the amounts and purposes listed below. $8,000 for boiler pan, $24.75 for boiler maintenance, $2,400 to reseal the drain pan, which will be some sort of a special, and $1,600 to re-pipe the relief valve. Do we want to change the 24 to speak out of service agreement rather than saying the panel? Yeah.
Well, they, they have a very legitimate reason as to why the pan needs to be sealed, then, I guess.
It's $2,400.
I mean, I agree with you, it seems excessive to me that.
There's a lot of money when you take.
There's gonna be a reason actually why.
I'd spend that money on a service agreement, and I'd have it be a three-year agreement, and let's get this going out of our head. That's how I'd like that to be.
So I'll, I'll second that with the service agreement.
Okay.
Concept there.
Okay. Any further discussion?
What happens to that, that pan, I mean, is it, did it say it?
No, it's in there, it's in there. It's under the boilers, the boiler's set. But the pan creates like a bathtub, and they put the boilers on top of it. The trouble with the pan is it's a sheet metal pan, and the boiler pushes out water that isn't like the, the, the acidic level of like two, or pH level. And so it ate the daylight out of the pan. So the pan's lost its integrity, it doesn't pour water on it. And so the deal is that we're gonna try and put some schmutz on it and seal it, and I'm like.
Probably not gonna work.
So what, did you, I guess, I don't understand how, how the boiler is going to, what, isn't that gonna be a problem? If you don't fix it, isn't it gonna?
Well, we're putting in a pipe valve to collect the water that would normally go into the pan, and that's gonna be redirected.
Right.
So the pan becomes secondary.
The overflow on the boiler drips into the, right now, runs into this pan, right? Which is full of holes, almost at some point, completely run out. And so when it leaked last week, it went into the pan and into the ceiling, and it's been to a light fixture, and we had to give it back. So if we take the overflow and pipe it into the sewer, it's not gonna be able to paint anymore, pH level.
The only, the only concern that they, they did mention, but again, this is way down the line. I don't know. Is if we do that, which is fun, when the relief valve is not functioning, we, they will not, there won't be any obvious warning of that, because we won't be sealing it.
Yeah.
It will be going directly to the comm.
To the back.
So we won't necessarily know that anymore. Now, we knew last week or two weeks ago. Because we saw the water.
Yeah.
But if it's being piped directly into that drainage line, we wouldn't necessarily know. Now, there's, there are likely other symptoms that allow us to narrow it down, but that was just one thing. That wasn't a reason not to do, it was just something that happened to me.
Yeah, that's, I don't want to have a tech discussion of that. I'll have a tough time signing up to that. Okay, if we do issue a, if we do get the service agreement, and they're here on August, September, your PM, you know, we really should.
You want to tell her?
We should have.
Yeah. No, that makes sense. Good, thank you. That's helpful.
All right, all of the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, that's it.
We have a little TA report, but.
Mostly information that you all have been made aware of.
Um, I was, I actually bumped into someone in Home Depot today, a question about the railings of the bandstands, and are they going to be painted?
Yes. After the wood matures. He's just waiting, he was out there last week, that's one of the.
He did the moisture meter thing, right?
He did, he did again.
Yeah.
He wants to get tested the wood, and he said it was still a little high, and he wanted it, but he's monitoring it and looking. Going right.
Yep. We're good, keep watching.
Yeah, I think that's good, so.
You're good.
I had a nice meeting with our planning board last night. Joni was there, so she can jump in wherever I don't summarize it correctly, but it was discussing a master plan implementation, sort of concept, which was talking very, in a very introductory way about possibly expanding the town center overlay, and just sort of seeing the pluses and minuses to that, and the appetite. You know, no decisions are being, you know, nearly, we're not in the place to make a decision, it's just discussion. But it was nice to, to hear from some of those folks, and they're gonna keep chatting about it as well. And I'll report back to the master plan implementation, so. Yeah, just something that bothered me.
You wanna make a call?
Yeah, it's a goal of the master plan, you know, and some of it's different concepts, so hopefully we see where it goes.
Did, did we get the cameras put out for the highway garage? Do we know?
There was one that was being installed. Did it finish wrong? And the problems run away?
Sorry, I know we've had enough, I don't know.
Since the camera put in.
Since I last notified you.
Set problem.
I've set problem.
Set problem.
So the answer question, the idea is that they put in, they were putting in, you know, kind of a basic camera function. And that was popping in two weeks, right? About two weeks ago that, that, that was put in, and, um, problems run away.
Looking like a camera.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for joining.
Godspeed.